Bird.
Here.
Henson.
Here.
Mormon.
Here.
Helsa Beck.
Here.
Williamson.
Yes.
Ingsstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Any changes, Your Honor?
Uh, yes, there's one change. Um, uh, this is a little known fact, but even mathematicians can count. And so I will go ahead and re- uh, remove, uh, I will draw my veto of resolution, uh, thirty minutes. Read and request that, uh, we take item six point I point one off the agenda first.
I move to approve without change.
Second.
Please call the rolls.
Henson.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Helsa Beck.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Ingsstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes. Number three, presentation of petitions and other communications. A Ames Economic Development Commission fourth quarter report, Brenda.
She's not here.
Not here, we. Okay. You reschedule?
Uh, no, she was supposed to be here.
Okay.
Uh, well, something happened.
Sorry, well, I text her. All right. Uh, can we table this until and if and when she comes?
Please.
Uh, B, letter of intent to apply for Main Street designation. Kelly?
So you are all invited to attend the application community workshop that Main Street did for us last Wednesday and then today. Um, one of the things to come out of that is that before we are able to actually have access to the application, we have to send in a letter of intent, um, with our signatures and then city signatures as well. That way they know that our city is serious in supporting Main Street effort, um, should we actually get that designation? So my ask for you, you should have one, um, a copy in your packet of that letter of intent. And so I would like for you guys to sign that tonight for us. If I don't know what you need to be able to do that.
Yeah. We do that after the. We have a copy up here.
Yep.
So, uh, we can get that signed. And I have a copy of. Yep.
Will you want that on there?
Yeah. And I've written a letter of support for the application as well. That's, uh, in the packets. Uh, everybody should have had the opportunity to read it and, um, Andrea will bring it up on the screen. Uh, paper copy or like sign a copy to.
Well, sir, here, here.
Okay.
Sign both letters.
Okay, so I have a copy for you as well. If you stick around after the meeting, can get that to you.
Perfect.
Motion to approve.
Okay, so we will need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Thank you.
Men?
Yes.
Helsa Beck?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Ingsstrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
C, set a public hearing for February nineteenth, twenty twenty-four at six P M. For the consideration of to amend the City of Boone Iowa precinct one boundary based on an annexation.
So moved.
Okay.
Please call the rolls.
Helsa Beck?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Ingsstrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Number five, reports of standing committees. A, Policy Administration. Williamson.
Let's skip four.
Oh, did you jump?
Let's skip four. Oh. Four, uh, public comment for items not on agenda.
You said you could count, right?
Public comment from, uh, D, uh, would you please come up to the front and, uh, speak your name for the records?
Okay, um, and I wanted to say first, when you get to the part about the, uh, uh, Main Street or the, uh, speed of grant changes, I really appreciate seeing the first lines in conjunction with working with Main Street. I don't know if you guys have even seen that part, but I think it's something that will use. And for applications, I really appreciate it. You have just a couple of comments on, uh, some of the changes that you're gonna be making to.
We, uh, this would be public comment for items not on the agenda.
I'm so sorry.
No, that's fine. Um.
Are they on the agenda?
It, it is. And let's see here, that would be, uh, five D one. And so if you wanna hold your comments till that time. That work for you? Thank you. Uh, any other public comments for items not on the agenda? Hey, um, Brenda's here with A and Z to see, are you okay?
I'm good.
We will now go to three, A, economic development, fourth quarter reports. Brenda?
Okay. Might need some more. So, yeah. Just a little jot. So, uh, I'm on the, uh, here for a couple of purposes tonight, first and foremost, to do a quick recap of fourth quarter, which seems like a long time ago, so. Um, up in the corner, you can, uh, see the marketing results of some of the emails we sent to site selectors, partner emails, including open rates. When we do those, we showcase, uh, properties specifically in the Boone Business Park in our Fisher. Then our workforce efforts are featured on the front page as well. Unemployment rate, uh, has dropped some. Uh, December's now available and we were underneath, uh, um, two percent for, uh, both counties. Um, highlighted the certain event and regarding some newsletters. Let's see on the, um, backside, we got. Talked about the submission of, uh, housing trust fund application. We did receive word late, late last week that we were successful in getting that. So I'll, uh, listen more about that as we get to later in the agenda. The, uh, News Republican Building, uh, uh, Councilmember Mormon and I, were down in that neighborhood, uh, last week and it looks like they're doing some of the interior finishes. Uh, talked about labors shut event, the grant for the wastewater treatment facility. Highlighted the Kading project that's coming to the community and the housing needs assessment, which we use to attract them, the, uh, Virginia Theater picture there looks quite a bit different than what we're looking at now. Uh, but it's been a busy year, um, but also at the bottom of that page, we highlighted our efforts with the National Guard. And then the very bottom of the, the one with the certain photo, I'm highlighting an event that we're putting on on February fifteenth related to workforce support from all of our industries. I'm sure Jen's, Jen's here, she's, uh, partnering with us on that, so. Any questions as relates to kind of looking back at twenty-three and we're ahead of twenty-four? We appreciate the opportunity to work on your behalf and, uh, I'll be up a little later when we talk about housing.
Okay, thank you. We are now back to now five, reports of standing committees. A, Policy Administration Employee Relations, Williamson.
Okay, um, I have no report, but I do wanna state that our next meeting will be February nineteenth at five fifteen.
E, Public Safety and Transportation.
Helsa Beck? I report, Your Honor.
C, Utility Committee, Ingsstrom.
Uh, no report. We do have a upcoming meeting this month and then Bill's gonna give us an update on the U V project later on.
Uh, one, one other thing, Kyle and myself, and I think this falls under public safety. Um, and Waylon and Perry are gonna be walking the overlay project tomorrow and making notes and stuff to get that process moving.
D, Economic Development, Mormon?
Um. The revisions of the incentive fund we'll go over later. I think, uh, well, I guess we'll go over it now, sorry. Review and approve changes to Boone downtown incentive pound, uh, incentive fund B D A program. And if you've got that in your packet, just to hit some of the high points of what we changed, we just added some language about the intent in that first paragraph, uh, we removed, uh, commercial property is not within the defined area identified in C three on the attached map. That property is not eligible for this program. Eligible facade improvements of, uh, projects facing a Main Street without, within the area must comply with the minimum brickstone requirements as set forth in the current Boone ordinances. At minimum, the owner shall make every effort to match the existing architectural in the building, including windows and fascia. Existing correcate, corrugated extruded metal panels are not acceptable materials and must be replaced with suitable exterior materials such as, but not limited to stone, brick, masonry or glass in order to qualify for this program. Wooden box out for window replacements are not allowed. A business retail store must be located and operated in the property at the time of the B D F grant application. Said business must have a posted, posted hours and adequate signage as approved by the City of Boone and be visible to the public. A business retail store is defined as per the purpose of this program as an office or retail space that maintains regular business hours, meaning the business is open at least three days per week and a minimum of twenty-four hours per week. Properties that only have tenant spaces such as apartment buildings and a home business do not qualify for the program. In addition, the business in compliance with the current Boone city ordinance must occupy and use, and use at least fifty percent of the area of the first floor. That, that was already in there. The business must be located at the front of the building. If the property is not occupied by a business or retail store at the time of the B D F application, the owner must establish to the satisfaction of the committee that said space will be occupied by a business retail store within six months of the completion of the project. If the owner does not fulfill the requirements, that owner agrees to repay the City of Boone all funds received and shall do so within thirty days after the being notified in writing by the city. Tax exempt entities, whether operator or organized or individual, are not eligible for this program. Uh, application requirements on the, uh, number one, we added our, at the sole discretion of the committee based on the requirements sent forth herein. And number five, paragraph number five or item number five, the application will require a minimum of two bids from contractors for each segment of work to be completed. If the owner can reasonably prove that they are unable to find additional bids for that work, this requirement may be waived by the committee. A detailed business plan establishes the use of property setting forth the information that the property is eligible for this program, including specific information as to the business to be operated at the property and the owner's intent as to continue ownership of the property. Number eight, the project must be completed within one year of the approved application during that year. The committee retains the right to notify the owner that the, that satisfactory progress is not being made on the project and schedule meeting to discuss whether the grant shall continue. Committee retains the right to rescind the approved, the approval in cases where satisfactory pro- progress is not being made or to the extent of, uh, or to extend the one-year deadline. The committee will take into account projects associated with other state and federal grants, a delayed project and circumstances out of the control of the owner. If the application is approved, number nine, if the application is approved, funds paid by the City of Boone, the owner authorizes the City of Boone to place a lien against the property for those funds. That lien will be for a period of four years and shall require the owner repay the funds of the city. If the city owner fails to comply with the requirements set forth above or sells or transfers the property in that four-year period of time. Amount to be repaid in cases where the, uh, property is sold, transferred will be reduced by twenty-five percent for each year that passes after the funds are paid to the owner. In the case where the owner fails to establish a business or retail store, the fund shall be repaid in full and there shall be no reduction. Committee retains the authority to establish the amount to be repaid and compromise any such amounts if deemed necessary. The owner will sign all documents as necessary to implement that lien. Under program details, number two, any grant or denial of the application shall be at the sole discretion at, of the council, um, of the committee, I'm sorry. Uh, we eliminated, uh, number five. And, and we eliminated number ten in its entirety. If you have any questions, be glad to answer those questions as to why we did that.
In council?
The committee was unanimous, the utility or the, uh, economic developer unanimously approved this vision. It was, uh, thoroughly went over by, uh, the city, the city attorney, so, um, I just said, we'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
Uh, seeing no questions from council, I agree we have question from, uh, the night. If we've approached.
It's a good program and I really appreciate the many teams working on us with the project. I was, I appreciate all that, but I do have one concern about your definition of a retail business being open three days a week and posting hours. A lot of our businesses downtown are by appointment only. A lot of these people are, they have full-time jobs and they do this trying to get a second business going. And it's just not feasible for them to sit in their business even three days a week to run that business or worse yet, pay someone to sit in that space and try to keep the doors open. Uh, photographers, we have a photographer that is there by appointment only, hairdressers, um, uh, the Rondo Beauty Shop just now closed down and they were by appointment only. Those hairdressers are by appointment only. Accountants don't sit in their office, office looking for walk-ins. There's just a lot of businesses run these days that are appointment only and they may not be open a full three days a week, but that doesn't mean that they're not a good business for us to have downtown. That was just the thing I would just like you to take into consideration. And that's.
Was that all under our discretion, could it?
Absolutely could.
So where we could.
I, I wouldn't think the way it's written, it could.
Right, that's.
I, I think if it's not open and doesn't meet the definition, you can't change that. I mean, you can change it before you adopt it, but we can't adopt it and then you say two weeks from now, well, we're not going to, uh, deny this business because they're by appointment only, so if you wanna make that change, uh, I could look at putting some language together to, to accomplish that.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's a good idea to have that discretion in there just to.
I can do it so that, so that you would have the discretion in, in those situations to determine that in fact.
Off five. That'd be best then.
Yeah. I, I think so too, cause I took D's point. Um, if they're not, you know, if they're by appointment only, but they're still a business, I don't have a problem with that. You know, what, what's rest of council think? You all right with that?
I'm good with that.
Yeah, or as Bill suggests, we could just add to the current language or a, a business that qualifies in the discretion of the council.
Sure.
That way you can adopt it tonight with that language on.
All right.
It's fine by me.
It's fine by me too.
Make a mention with that amendment if you so choose.
You'd be all right.
I, uh, have, uh, some more input.
I have a couple of questions.
Good questions, come on.
Um, so you went through it pretty fast and I haven't seen this yet, but about upper story housing, how does that fit in if there's a business on the main floor? How does the upper story housing fit into B D F stuff?
As long as it's the facade of the building facing the Main Street.
Then it's okay to continue and do the whole thing?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, and then the number of contractors, you have to have two contractors. I talked to a couple of business owners who feel like they're capable of doing some of the work themselves. How does that fit into like saving the money so that they can do more things with those dollars?
You had the language in there that if a contractor's not available, you can waive that request.
I believe Hogs just did that.
Well, we can re- waive the requirement of term bid.
Yeah.
Can't, uh, uh, there's language in that, wasn't there language in there that re- that referenced doing the work themselves?
We've done a project like that before, uh, on Keel State. I will tell you that it was a challenge because of getting everything that we needed and being able to prove like if, how did it go? They were doing labor on their own and then they wanted reimbursed for that.
So we don't.
That's really hard to do.
We don't reimburse for their labor.
Right.
Um, so what we run into is we get all these different receipts, a gallon of paint here, paintbrushes here, and we don't know where it's been used, what it's for, and they're supplying us with all this information with no real information as to what it is. So then I'm going through trying to guess, um, and it's pieced milled in. So, so far we, we've had a couple of them and it, it's not easy.
Is there a way that we can make it easier? Just, I'm thinking to give those business owners more bang for their buck. So I've got thirty thousand dollars, but I can do five thousand dollars myself. I understand not them not getting paid for their labor. Like, I don't think that's been an issue in the people I talk to, just more the, the either material costs or, you know, it's stuff that they do themselves.
Well, like Andre said, if we just get receipts from Lowe's for six gallons of paint, we don't know if that paint's being used in their home or in their business.
You guys do a walkthrough, right? I mean, to kind of see that this has been done, I mean.
Right, but that's, that's really tough to verify. I understand what you're saying. And I think maybe we just have to, maybe require a better explanation of what they're doing with those items.
Could you, could you have a estimate upfront of the materials that they?
And buy.
And then when you go through the walkthrough, you can say that's reasonable. That's a reasonable amount of materials too.
Yeah, I, I, I don't have a problem with that.
We do, I mean, they do have to supply us with an estimate. Um, it's, it's how they're, they're supplying us those receipts.
Or there's a way that would be easier for you to not to give you that.
Well, understand that their grant is based on the money they spend.
Right.
Right? But so if they're doing some of the labor themselves, that grant would be decreased. Right?
Yeah.
We don't pay for their labor.
We don't hate it, blame it.
Right.
That grant about local contractors as well.
Okay, well, I'm just thinking then that could be used elsewhere, so if I'm, if I'm paying, well, not paying somebody to put up the drywall. Now I have the extra money that now I can put a couple more windows upstairs or something like that, like would still use the full dollar.
That plan has to be in place prior to the approval of B D F approval.
Right, but if they were allowed to do their own labor, then that would have.
We've, we've done that, Richard did that.
Okay.
They did a lot of that work themselves. But we just paid for the materials.
Okay.
So, um.
So then how did they do it in that case then? The purchase order, was it?
Yeah, we had purchase orders and then they had, uh, you know, they had did all their own metalwork and stuff like that.
Right.
For the fascia.
Right.
They were very organized and submitted receipts that proved to us that they, that they got that material. We saw that material at the walkthrough and we had proof that they actually paid for the material.
So would it?
Those are required in order for us to release money.
So would it be such that like, if you had a, okay, business owner, this is how you have to present things to us if you're going to do some of the work yourself? Like that, I mean, something, uh, template like what Richard did or something.
Be clear upfront with what our expectations are with documented receipts.
Yeah, typically we'll go for a B D F grant application. We have all that information. The, the estimates, the materials, all that stuff is presented at that.
When they're submitting the actual.
Right.
To be more.
Right, and then we, when we go back to verify, we just verify that all that work's been done, those new windows are in, all that stuff is there.
Well, we haven't had situations where they, they say the work's going to cost twenty thousand dollars and then a month after they get started, they come back and say, hey, I'm gonna do five thousand of it myself, so I wanna use that money.
We've never had that.
No, I mean, that work, so they need to have their front.
Yes, absolutely, but I think a couple of them haven't applied because, like, I don't know that reason.
Right.
That they didn't think they were allowed to do that stuff. It didn't make sense to spend this money on things for.
Not at all. All they have to do is, is give us a material list of what they intend to do, how much of that work they're gonna do themselves, what, you know, what segment of that work they're gonna do. I don't think that'd be a problem for us on the committee, do you?
And maybe possibly a timeframe as well, so it doesn't drag on.
Well, and that's part of this now. We've got that one year. Cause we have a couple of B D F grants to hold. And that ties up money that we could be using someplace else.
Yeah.
There, if they don't wanna, if they don't wanna get done in a timely manner, that's why we put that in.
That makes sense. And then one other thing I just wanna make you aware of, if we get Main Street designated, one of the things that they provide, they call it technical assistance. So this gives the city, people in the district, access to all of their kind of specialty, their architects, their contractors, all of that for free. Um, so if there's people there taking advantage of the B D A stuff instead of hiring, um, I can't remember the word to use, but like certified architects and things, that's something that we could be able to provide for me through the Main Street or room. So just to make sure that if we have that service for free, that it would qualify as the kind of architectural. Requirement.
Well, mostly these requirements that I, we put in here. Saying hi, the committee put in here based on the fact that Main Street.
They don't get it in a payment loss.
Kind of holds those guidelines architecturally and stuff like that, and that's why we put those in there.
The architectural engineer, that's what I keep for. But they will.
Going to build an official comfort of that inspection.
So just, and it was one of the things that like you have to have.
I'm gonna review it.
You have to pay twenty-five and.
I mean, they make.
But if that's a service that we get for free through Main Street, that would be kind of a a tool, a tool in an even exchange. They wouldn't need to go out and hire a. Right.
Flexible. Come up with the many. Maybe there's.
Or if they provide that, I mean, they have so many bold that they.
And they probably, they probably have structural.
Yep.
They're dealing with, hopefully, because we're dealing with their buildings.
Yes.
Lots in the chief's wheelhouse here, so.
Yes.
Censoring.
All right. This is great for our community.
You're welcome for the questions. Um, so previously we were discussing the motion to approve with the addendum of, uh, allowing overriding the, uh, hours.
At the.
At the discretion of the council.
At discretion of the.
With the discretion of council, discretion of the E D committee. Well, yeah.
E D committee.
Okay.
We can bring you anything that might be a problem.
When we, when we do abatements for the house, for housing in town, we always have the assessor come out and, and do an inspection of the property. And sometimes with businesses, it's hard to get into those properties. That was, you know, in my past life. Is that something we could add in there as well to make sure that the assessor knows about the property and can do an inspection of the property for final approval? You know, with, when we do the abatements for housing, it's, it's a requirement that the assessor has to come in for the abatement to be active.
That's inside the city.
That's inside the city limits and that's.
Abatements are based on valuation.
On valuations, but the assessor needs to know that there's been something to property to properly assess the building. You know, if you're taking a vacant building and making it, you know, nice again, you're gonna add value to the property and the assessor needs to know about that. And when we do, you know, when we do the abatements for the city, they have to, the assessor has to do an inspection before the abatement is approved. I know it's a different thing, but it's nice to let the assessor know as well. I don't know, I know you met with them.
As a matter of course. You're necessarily contingent on.
That, you know, or to get final approval, it has to, the assessor has to go through the building as well.
Problem is, is scheduling them at the same time that we schedule our meeting.
Yeah, there's, there's three phasers up there and they can wake, wake and make it make it work.
So with the abatements though, the reason why that they need to, uh, assess it prior to awarding the abatement, so they know the valuation.
Yeah.
That's based on that. So like this, it doesn't really matter what the valuation actually is, right? We're not guaranteeing that any of the evaluations, dollar amount, dollar amount spent.
Yeah, but you're still increasing value of them.
It's necessarily true. I mean, if, if the city is going to invest thirty thousand dollars in a business, it'd be nice to know that we're getting some sort of return on that.
Yes, exactly.
Right?
Just like when we do an abatement.
I, I, I mean, I.
Assessor gets a work. The, the assessor gets the, gets the work permits, but there's no guarantee that they get to go through the building. They, you know, they don't have to go through the building. The, the owner has to do that, so.
I don't know, what makes thing.
We have a, uh.
The B D F grant is for exterior work only. Do you typically go inside and inspect any inside work or your work is all outside?
The only, well, like when we just did yours, we went inside just to make, verify the fifty percent, right?
Okay.
That's why we did it. That's the only reason we go in. That's the only reason I go in.
Come, you know, come in that.
Do you always?
No, not always.
No, not always.
No.
Been in every single one.
Well, I have been at some point with that.
So, yeah, I mean, the the stuff that we do is, you're right, it's exterior facade. It has nothing to do with inside the building. But the exterior facade does.
Yeah.
Now, the the difference would be if we did the downtown grant, the five thousand dollar grant for first time business owners, right? That's interior work.
Yeah. I just think that that should be worded in there is to communicate with the assessor to be able to properly assess the property.
You withhold the grant if a valuation didn't come in where you thought should be, would be the implication there.
Yeah, that's true too.
I don't think we have any expectation.
No.
That is.
No.
We're not gonna increase that about.
No, we're not gonna increase.
Several other reasons for doing it.
Yeah, so I I don't know, having that be a condition of awarding the grant would be beneficial to us in any way.
Although I don't think it's a condition of warning the grant is, it's just.
No, it's just something that we would do during final inspection.
Yeah, okay.
Um, but like to Dee's point, it's not interior work. It's just exterior facade.
Yeah.
So. I don't know, right? That's a question, very good question. I don't.
And and in my in my Navi, in this scope of this this one, but it's something that I think that we should look at on, you know. For the in for the new business grant as well, to have that in there, the wording to say that we need to do an, then the inspection needs to be done by the assessor.
So we need to get that language in here now before we approve this?
Good. Be one option. The other option would be to direct that staff be required to inform the assessor's office once an application is approved or. Once a subject to final approval.
That, yeah, that's a, yeah.
Fashion.
Yes.
And then we could, if if at all possible, he could do the final.
Yeah.
Walkthrough message.
Yeah.
Better, right?
Yeah.
Better.
I know this is cathedral deals.
But I asked for input.
Yeah.
Okay, so. Looking for a motion.
I know.
Move those changes to downtown B DIP funds.
With uh with.
Program.
With the literature changes from city attorney. Hang on, what? Okay, so there was going, you were discussing the amendment.
Right.
To have.
Under E D discretion for the hours, right?
Yeah. Do you want to amend your motion to allow Economic Development Committee to override the posted business hours at their discretion?
Yes, yeah. Posted business hours, right?
Yes.
So, yeah, that's.
Yeah. There were motion to approve with the uh um a de- uh amendment to allow E D to override. The uh posted business hours at their discretion, second.
Second.
Okay, please call the roll.
Williamson?
Yes.
Angstrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Elsa Beck?
Yes.
Um, number six, department reports. Uh, oh, uh, before that, anything else from Economic Development?
I know, your honor, that's all I have.
Oh, have a hand? You have a question?
We just missed what changes, what the colors made on the map?
We're not any changes on the map, right? We've been making you change.
Are we gonna make the district changes?
The same map that we've used.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a zoning map.
So the B DIP has always been that red?
Well, before there, they had the discretion to go outside that area. And now with the changes, the there is no discretion. It only applies to the red area.
That may change. Once Main Street is going, flowing along, then we can change it, but we're we're directing those funds downtown.
Hey. Number six, a department reports, uh, A Building Official, Dave Ace is not here, uh, Finance Officer, Andrea.
Uh, yes, under the consent agenda, there is a depository resolution. Uh, we have a new bank, uh, People's Bank. Um, and we've added that along with I added, um, I increased the maximum deposits for several banks. And I see some for that just don't take our deposits. They're still listed, like they say we were to um bid on a C V or something. But they don't do this generally, so I reduce theirs and increase some others. That's all I have.
Thank you. C City Attorney, Jim.
No report, your honor.
D Director of Public Works, Waylon.
As you see in your agenda pack, which is Resolution thirty-one seventy, has a hiring of a new hire for Public Works. Introduce Taran Jacoby. He comes from us, to us from Kelowna, Iowa. Taran is a recent graduate of Simpson College. Um, from everything that I have seen, uh. He shows outstanding character and leadership and teamwork. So I'm really excited for him to come on with us. He's gonna start the twelfth, as the resolution states, and I'd like to thank you guys all for your support in it and. Finally puts Public Works back to full staff since July.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Um, E Library, Jamie is not with us tonight. F, R Director, Mike, go report. Uh, G Engineers, Bill?
Thank you, sir. The first, uh, is Resolution thirty-one sixty-five. As you know, we're doing a project on Eighth Street. From Crawford, I believe, West. Waylon, correct? Crawford West. Uh, S E H went out and got bids. Uh, the bids are in the packet, which you've seen. The low bid was from Manat for one oh six, six seventy. There were also some alternates on there. Those are on there as well for twenty thousand, one thirty. Uh, our engineers recommending uh approving the project and going with uh Manat, so I. I'll answer questions first if there are any.
That's Division to Crawford, right?
Yes, it's just. Cross crosswalk east of Crawford there. We wanted to make sure we encompass the crosswalk from the high school.
Right.
Will add into this project. Um, so from there, westward division to the new paving for the sanitary sewer project through there in LA, so. Brings us to two nice closures of the paid project.
And it is under budget.
Perfect.
Awesome. Still moved?
Second. Please call the roll.
Angstrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Elsa Beck?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Okay, my second item is Resolution thirty-one sixty-six. This is to do some improvements at the industrial uh Park Road Water Tower. If if utility committee remembers, we had a discussion uh about some things we needed to improve on at the water plant in regards to the T T H M's. This uh project for the industrial tower includes a mixer that that improves uh that process for us. So I'll answer any questions, otherwise I'd motion to approve this project.
Set move.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Bird?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Elsa Beck?
Yes.
Williamson? Angstrom?
Yes.
Okay, item number three is Resolution thirty-one sixty-six. It's for the Green Street Water Tower. And it includes uh maintenance and painting. That one's considerably higher than the industrial park road one, it's over a hundred thousand, so it's been brought to council. Uh, I answer any questions you have for the Green Street Water Tower project. Uh, if there are none, of course, the approval of Resolution number three-one-six-seven.
Set move.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Henson?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Elsa Beck? Williamson?
Yes.
Angstrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Okay, moving on, Public Safety Chief Adams.
Uh, no report, your honor.
Steve Weeble.
Well, quick, your honor, uh, we still have a few openings for our Citizens Police Academy. That's gonna start in March, so um. I'm gonna be absent. Thank you.
And City Administrator, back to Bill.
Thank you, sir. Under my report, uh, the first item is update on Central Housing Trust Fund Grant. If you remember, we got permission to apply for that grant. And Brenda has some good news.
So I left this in my quarterly report. We got news uh late last week that our application for another round of funding was approved. Uh, so with the the match of the city, uh, thirteen hundred dollars left from the last round and the. Award from um Central Iowa Housing Trust Fund will be awarding about a hundred thousand dollars.
Awesome.
Uh, we were able to do eleven homes before. And uh so I'm optimistic we'll be able to squeeze in a few additional ones. So. Uh, I have a draft of a press release. I'm gonna put the chief to work here again. Uh, draft of a release that I want to just walk through with all of you. Um, if you're comfortable, it's uh generally what I've put together. I want to equip to you if you have questions. I'll work with Eric and we'll get this loaded out and just be in via the city's communication channels uh tomorrow. And we'll get the application posted on the city's website. Um, so um I really, for the most part, this is exactly what we drafted almost a little less than a year ago. Uh, remember, it's really designed for major home improvements for pairs that qualify. They must own their home. And um they must live live within the corporate boundaries of the city of Boone. Funding partners are the city of Boone and the Central Iowa Housing Trust Fund, which the city of Boone is a member. Uh, will prioritize um those homeowners. Uh, that utilize local contractors for those improvements. Uh, we do not require a match, uh, but the scoring criteria leverages when you're able to leverage your own funds, so they'll score a little bit higher. Um, the committee, I would propose to be the Economic Development Committee. I provide them their rating. I had a time, so they all score. I will serve an advisor role and not score the applications. Uh, but again, also, we'll stress in the informational meeting, I'll get to you in a minute. I'm really focusing on not taking blue siding to gray siding, but really those improvements. That will improve the overall safety of the home. Uh, projects cannot be started until their application is approved. We had a few folks last time that. Submitted applications on projects that were already done, so I'm trying to stress that. They'll have till November thirtieth to wrap those up. And they have till December fifteenth to request reimbursement. Uh, I would propose we do an informational meeting on Saturday, March second. The one we held during the week before did not have any attendance, but the one on Saturday was well attended, so. I'm proposing only a Saturday event this time around, and so I'll be available and and conduct that workshop. Uh, with the plan to really have good applications come in, so. We'll have application materials here at the Building Officials Office, at the library, and at the city's website. The goal would be is that we'll have applications in, and we'll be able to notify people by May fifteenth. Um, we'll pay them after they've incurred the expenses. And there's a statement there about determining the eligibility, the number of grants. Um, and again, we would uh have the applications come to my office. No later than May first, so we'll move at a pretty good clip once we get those in. Uh, in terms of getting those turned around. Application requires some estimates to be included. That's why we need to give a little bit of time. Uh, to get that work done. We asked for photos. Um, again, I'm not anticipating for those of you that served before, I think David. Terry served in that rule before. Eli, maybe you were also involved. I can't remember. Um, anyway, we had photos, we had good narrative. It's a pretty extensive application, but. Again, I'm anxious to get the word out. Um, one of the things that I'll do uh is once we've released the press release. I will send that to all of the folks that we weren't able to fund last year. To see if there's if they're still eligible to apply. I've been keeping a list for a year of people that uh have wanted the funds. So we'll distribute the press release and the application out to those folks and uh do everything we can to try to make sure we're. Communicating with people that have expressed an interest in the past, but the funding wasn't available, so. What questions do you have for me on this?
What's the city match, Brenda?
It was a kind of odd amount, twenty.
Thousand short.
Yeah, it had just a weird amount, so.
We're getting a four to one return on our investment.
Yeah, that's.
That'd be right.
Great.
It's gonna help a lot of people.
All right.
Yeah, it's it's I, again, um, as a reminder, we talked a little bit about this the last council, and we do put a deed restriction. Uh, as part of the application, and that's one of the things they'll need to agree to is that. Uh, that we'll put, once the work is done, um, and we've gotten a sign off that they're happy with the work. Um, we'll actually put a five-year deed restriction that'll come off in in yearly increments. Uh, to ensure that people aren't using these funds and flipping citizens. Uh, but that's part of the process and um. I had to send one reminder yet, but I'm anticipating it in the mail, uh, hopefully tomorrow, and then we've got all eleven. Uh, recorded at the courthouse, so. Questions for me on uh as relates, I'm anxious to get the word out. I want to communicate with the folks that, and again, if you have folks that have a question, just refer them to me or absolutely to the informational meeting. Uh, we'll stick around as long as we need to to answer those questions and get people the help they need to get the application out.
I'll just add that we need the contract and we'll do our best to get it on the consent agenda for February nineteenth. When you sign.
They're efficient, so.
Yeah, awesome.
He signed a, uh, get this pushed out a little bit too, so.
Thank you.
No problem.
Add to that, Elijah, if that's right. Yes, I I would like to track to have the assessor be involved in this as well. I don't know if we can put that as as something on. If that's know that we can do an inspection of the property as a final approval thing. I don't know if we can add that as as well, so.
I'll defer to the city's attorney. Can I add that to the application or?
You certainly can or.
I mean, I call myself the project advisor.
Okay.
So I'm the one that, the other thing I. Leave sorry, folks in the audience that I forgot to mention, remember this program is only for folks that are eighty percent or below the countywide median. And so they do kind of, the first time they submit an application, they'll do a a self-assessment that they qualify. Uh, with kind of handwriting out where their income comes from. Once the council decides, the Economic Development Committee takes it to you all and you approve that list. That's when I ask for the two months of bait statements, social security statements, uh, their past year's taxes. That's where I officially do the uh the sign off that says they will qualify and they fall below. At eighty percent, so that's part of the reason we keep that off-site. It's confidential. Uh, my eyes are the only ones on there, but we do go first by kind of their word that they that they. Will fall under that line and then after the fact, I go in and officially qualify them. But again, so I do a lot of that as the advisor. I just want to make sure I'm not overstepping if I do put in a statement that we reserve the right to. Uh, we will notify the assessor of the.
Oh, I think clearly as project manager, you have that authority, so.
But when I overstep my bounds.
Hey.
Okay. My next item is back to city hall improvements. You know, we're budgeting money each year. There's been requests about we put new doors. Out there about replacing the doors, the council chambers, the auditorium, then the other two doors that are out there to match. So we've got some estimates on that, uh, and it is about um twenty-four thousand dollars, twenty-four six. For all the hardware, labor and everything like that, plus if you look over by the uh. Drinking fountain, be some work done over there too, to so everything matches. That's about seventeen hundred, and then the work does not include staining. Which is quite the job, the amount of staining they'll need to do with the new doors and everything. That's around um. Thirty-five hundred for all the staining, so we're looking at uh close to thirty thousand to complete that job. Uh, in addition, we've got some, uh, we painted inside here and and the auditorium. There's some other areas of city hall that need painted on the back. Uh, entrance in the wall into the basement, uh, quite a bit of painting there. At one, two, three, four, five, six different areas of painting. The bid for that is ten thousand. Um, we're planning to proceed unless you have some changes that you would like to make or see nothing done otherwise. That's what our plan is for the money. It comes in under budget of what we have budgeted for it. This will not take all the money we have budgeted for it. This will not take all the money we have budgeted for it. Um, the contractor probably can't start till. April first. I know he's got a job at the P D to do first. And then he plans on being here. Would you like us to proceed? Any concerns you have or anything?
Sounds good.
Okay.
And this sign is up?
Yes.
That, that's, that's up.
My last item is just an update on the U V project. The project in essence has been completed, other than four or five warranty items. Uh, Perry from S E H is going to take care of those for us and oversee them and help J D at the wastewater plant. For all intents purposes, the project is completed. However, as you know, there's a, a significant amount of. Uh, liquidated damages. The contractor has a change order for a significant amount of money. Doesn't mean they deserve it or they're going to get it, but they have it in. So I think the next step, and Jim and Ray, if you have any inputs, please put in, but we're looking at mediation. Uh, to go forward and there certainly is a possibility of litigation. Jim, do you have anything to?
Oh, you're correct. That's what it's at.
So I want to give you that update. So we have four or five of the items that we're dealing with as well. I'll answer any questions you have, otherwise, sir, that is into my report.
Any questions, comments? Okay, uh, number seven, an agenda. All items listed under this consent agenda will be enacted in one motion. No separate discussion of these items unless a request is made prior to the time that council votes motion. Are there any items on the consent agenda that you would like to be discussed separately? Hearing none, we motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. Please call the roll.
Mormon?
Yes.
Elsa Beck?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Yes.
Bird? Henson?
Yes.
Now you're hired.
Yeah, unfortunately, a technical situation. Number eight ordinances, A, the meeting ordinance twenty-three oh one to allow the city of Boone, Iowa to change its procurement by request for proposal language in the code of ordinances. Chapter thirty-two, section thirty-two point oh one.
So moved.
Second, please call the roll.
Yes. Angstrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Williamson?
Yes.
Angstrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Elsa Beck?
Yes.
B, first reading ordinance twenty-three oh two to allow the state of Boone, Iowa to change its water meters language in the code of ordinances, chapter ninety-one, section ninety-one point fifteen.
So moved. Second.
Please call the roll.
Angstrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Elsa Beck?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Uh, number nine, mayor's comments. I have a couple of comments to see evening. I am accepting applications um through the website. Uh, there's a Google form to mail to city hall uh or email to myself or Arts App, uh, the Arts Advisory Board. And tend to make those appointments uh at our next meeting. I have had uh at least seven so far. Good applicants come in, so I should be able to fill all of those positions, but the more the merrier in the applications realm, so. Please encourage anybody that would be interested to apply. Second thing is, I did hear before uh coming into the meeting of the passing of uh former secretary, Iowa Secretary of Agriculture, Bill Norley. Who was a great public servant, um, and served as Secretary of Agriculture from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-one, so he's going to be missed by many. Acknowledge that. Number ten, council member comments. Hey, hearing none, we'll move on to number eleven, closed session pursuant to Iowa Code twenty-one point five. One eye to discuss the professional competency of an individual if performance is being considered. When necessary to prevent needless and irreparable injury to that individual's reputation as that individual has once taken close.
I just don't understand that at all.
So moved.
Thanks.
Please call the roll.
Bird?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Elsa Beck?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Some?
Yes.